This evening that we can come here and do the work for the Town of Hope Mills. And bless those that are making decisions and guide their thoughts and actions. And please lead, guide, and direct us in everything we do tonight, not just for the Town of Hope Mills, but also for you and your will be done. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. At this time, do we have any additions or deletions to our agenda?
Madam Mayor, I have an addition to...
All right.
Tab 10, handout.
Long-Term Lease of Municipal-Owned Property and the Sale of Municipal Property Requested by Commissioner Larson. She's adding to that an ordinance, I guess for us to consider. We can't vote on an ordinance until we have all the other parts in place, but this ordinance would read, "Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Town of Hope Mills believes that the consideration of the sale or long-term lease of real property owned by the town is an issue that requires input from all elected officials. Now therefore be it ordained that the Board of Commissioners shall not discuss or consider the sale or long-term lease of any real property owned by the Town of Hope Mills unless the full Board of Commissions is present for the discussion. For purpose of this ordinance, long-term lease is defined as any lease longer than one year." And for those of you that don't have this, we will have this available for you, since it's not included in the agenda at the back. Are there any other additions or deletions to our agenda?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would like to add that we get information from the town attorney on how to name buildings or structures after people.
All right, that would be Item then H, under New Business, and that would be naming of buildings.
Madam Mayor, Scott addition for closed session to discuss personnel matters and attorney-client privilege.
Okay, so, and that would come, you want that at the beginning or at the end?
End's fine.
Okay, so that following our official comments, we will have a closed session for personnel reasons and attorney-client privilege. Are there any other additions or deletions to our agenda? If not, our agenda, our agenda will be with the addition of description of an ordinance under C, an Item H added under New Business for naming of buildings, and a closed session added at the end. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Summon...
Do I have, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. The first thing on our agenda this evening is a presentation by Jeremy Agard of the Swamp Dogs. I'll ask Jeremy to come to the microphone at this time and make your presentation.
Well, that adds up, or comes up. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jeremy Agard. I'm the general manager of the Fayette Swamp Dogs, and we're here to buffer. This is my luck, just so you know. Once this comes up, we're here to deliver what we call the pitch. The idea that we're bringing tonight is putting a new facility that we can bring a proven product and a first-class facility management team to the Town of Hope Mills. I'm going to show you a quick video that, that we have that gives an idea of what this would all encompass. It's kind of an aerial overview. If you want to go ahead, we'll see what this looks like. So, facility coming in from the outfield could be as simplistic as this. As you'll see, there are seats, obviously, in the bowl behind home plate, berm seating, and down the right field line could potentially be an area for private outings, group outings, and ballpark by day, we have the ability and the knowledge to turn this into a concert venue by night. So that's just a quick synopsis of something of what it could potentially look like. Now, the benefits that we're talking about bringing to the Town of Hope Mills is we've been at this a very long time. We're going into our 19th season as the Swamp Dogs, and with that many years of local experience, it's a proven commodity. We've done facility management, event operations for that long. Some of the things that, that we bring to the table are existing and established partnerships, from food and beverage vendors, to cleaning companies, to sponsorships, and marketing partners that are already in place. And looking at it, already 30% of our summer employees are Hope Mills residents. So, bringing those jobs to Hope Mills is a potential increase that for us, and the proximity of 295 makes this a huge opportunity to bring in outside avenues to the ballpark itself. Potential for this facility, and I say facility because it's much more than a ballpark, quarterly concert series. And the reason I use quarterly is because we don't want to just do a weekly concert with just some local artists that we could feature. We want to do big things and bring in national headliners, regional acts that we'd be able to sell to ballpark, and increase the economic impact that we would have on the Town of Hope Mills. You see yoga in the park? That's already something we've got on tap, and we want to be able to grow that. College tournaments, we've already had in place for over 10 years. Movie nights, we've done that. We've got one coming up this Friday for our annual trunk or treat. And seasonal festivals, we just did our first Oktoberfest. So the opportunities that we bring are really just touched on for the potential here. Possibilities, again, using the word venue or facility, football, soccer, lacrosse can all be played on a baseball field if the field is done right. Now, something that not a lot of people know is BMX, North Carolina is actually basically the headquarters for BMX. There's more BMX riders and training in North Carolina than anywhere else in the country. Skateboarding is a big thing that's actually coming to the Olympics, this upcoming Olympic season. So, with the right field and the right concourse, literally, the possibilities are endless. And we wanted to keep this short and sweet, but to give you an idea of things to think about, but I'll open it up to any questions that the board may have.
I have one, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
What do you plan on putting this park?
The existing golf course property.
Would it be appropriate, since we have been notified by McAdams' firm, that we can partner with groups to have them talk with the Swamp Dogs to see if there's feasibility here of this being a good partnership? And this could be a possibility for one aspect of our park? Would that be something the board would entertain, to let them speak with and let Rachel do the legwork as far as where we're moving forward with our current plan?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I think that sounds a real good idea. Go ahead and check with them and get them together and see what they have to offer as far as partnership.
And if I may, a great question was just asked of how big this would need to be. The typical ballpark is around five acres. That does not include parking. So it would be a fraction of the ball, of the golf course facility area.
How many acres is the current site?
15, including the parking lot, which we have a very substantial parking lot.
And when you say partnering, are you looking for us to do the capital investment?
Yes, we would look for a long-term lease. And we're looking in the range of $3 to $5 million for a ballpark that seats about 2,500.
How much was that again?
We're looking between $3 to $5 million, which we've spoken with some architects, obviously, as you guys all understand. We don't know until we get down that road, but that is the direction that we want to go. The facility that you saw there is a $10 to $12 million proposed ballpark.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
And you're, and you're recommending that the town pay the $3 to $5?
Yes, sir.
To construct the ballpark?
Our partnership would be in the long-term lease that we sign through rent, obviously the economic impact that we would bring with the events that we would bring to the town.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I ask a question.
Sure.
Drew, what's our financial standing? How much extra spare money do we have on hand?
I don't think it's in the $3 to $5 range, but we have about half that for just on testing. I feel like there's all options.
We will be discussing something on the lines of this later in the...
On the agenda?
On the agenda, in the meeting.
Yes, sir.
That was one thing that's already on the agenda, and Ms. Larson added something to it a little earlier.
Okay.
The question is, the question is, can they discuss this with McAdams' group just to see feasibility? It wouldn't be obligating the town to anything. It would just be feasibility, because she said as, as we came with partners that could become a part, you don't have to say yes or no, you just let her see if it would work.
In my personal opinion, we should wait till after this meeting's over and see where we go from there. Drew's already told us we don't have that kind of money.
We're not going to have the money for any of this, because we're going to have to do the golf course. We're going to have to acquire some funding from somewhere. It's not, we're not going to be able to handle it, because it's going to be millions for anything we do up there. So that's the reason when we talked, and the McAdams' group talked to us, and we had our meetings previously, as members, board members, we were told that the best thing we could do would be to bring in partners, and we don't have to obligate anything. All we have to do is to see if it's feasible, and that's quite easy for them to do, is see if it's something that would pay for itself. If you're waiting to do this, then this is something that's going to be long-term, because we can't approve this tonight.
Actually, we can with a supermajority.
Well, but you should have a hearing on this, I would think.
I would, I would rather wait. If we're going to spend that kind of money...
We're not spending it, Commissioner Legg. All we're doing is investigating. We're trying to come up with options.
Well then, why don't we investigate building our own stadium out there that has four or five fields? I just left a tournament this weekend from Rocky Mount that had nine playing fields, and they were packed with over 100 teams, and you couldn't find parking, and they got a lot of parking. I was there Saturday and Sunday both. So I would like to hold up until we, we try to partner our own stuff.
I mean, right now, Madam Mayor, if I may, when we heard from McAdams on the comprehensive plan, baseball didn't score, actually is in the bottom.
The concert, he did, the concert and the other activities. If you look at what he's, if you show him the screen where the other activities that could be done, the ones where he's got BMX, skateboarding, the ones that were all included, the extra ones.
I understand, Mayor, but the athletics was at the top of the list.
Well, that would be the YMCA. The YMCA is what mentioned at the last meeting, that they would be willing to partner with us, and that would again give us an opportunity to have another facility available sooner. But of course, it's your choice. Yes, ma'am?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a suggestion that they're just here talking to us about it as a feasibility study, and if we can get McAdams to go and talk to them and see what they come up with. I mean, we're not spending any money, we're not...
Correct.
Signing any contracts, we're not doing anything. It's just more like a feasibility study, and I don't see why we shouldn't do it.
Madam Mayor, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Douglas Ray. I'm the entertainment and marketing director for the Swamp Dogs. It literally takes a village for us to do what we do at JP Riddle, and with that knowledge, that's the exact same thing that would have to happen here, partnership, sponsorship, something that the Swamp Dogs bring 19 years of experience doing, that we're bringing to Hope Mills. But it really does take an entire team effort, that nobody goes into it beginning with that much money, but you somehow make it work, and we've been doing that for 19 years. That's the only point I want to make about this, that I concur, at the same time, it takes a whole bunch of other people to make something happen, even something as simple as a 30-game home stand.
Is there any particular reason you want to leave Legion Road?
We would want to maintain that facility still, that we could increase the level of tournaments that we host as a secondary facility.
Increase the size?
With two fields, we'd be able to host more teams than with one field.
Right.
Bringing more teams from, say for our college tournaments, we bring teams from the Northeast that it's too cold to play where they're at, but it's half the cost to go to Florida and stop in Fayetteville. We could increase that to double the number of teams that we host right now with one field.
Where your divisional rounds, so to speak, are played at one field, championship games played at the other, games going on simultaneously.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Could it be possible that we revisit it after we go through Tab 8 and 9, just so that we can see where the board sits on long-term debt bonds and versus partnering with the county and/or looking at doing this, so that we're not wasting anyone's time if the board chooses to go into a different direction?
Do we have any other comments? Your thoughts, Commissioner Bell Flowers?
All you're asking for is a feasibility study of the property.
Yes, sir.
That's what you're asking?
Yes, sir.
Who's going to cover the cost of that feasibility study?
It's, it wouldn't be...
There's no cost.
It's no cost.
It's already part of the, of the plan, if I'm not mistaken, sir?
Yeah, Ms. McAdams' group is looking now at developing the comprehensive plan, and part of that is looking at all other aspects that could fit into that. And if you'll remember, we had stakeholders meeting that we brought in partners to include Cumberland County. Commissioner Adams came to that meeting to talk in reference to what the county could do as far as being a stakeholder in, in developing the land as far as moving forward. So, it's not an obligation of anything, it's just a chance to see if this might be something that would work and maybe move us forward to a level of having a facility that we could do concerts and other type, it'd be a venue that we'd probably be a long way getting if, if the town has to come up with the money.
You guys have financial records, audited financial statements or whatever for your organization, for the minor league team here?
We do. I don't know that that would have an impact on the feasibility study, though.
Yeah, but...
They partner with Cumberland County, they pay rent to Cumberland County right now and have for 19 years.
But if we want to partner with anybody, we'd want to do a little due diligence?
Of course.
You know? Especially for our long-term lease.
Yes, sir.
My thoughts here, I know what you, I know what you guys want to do. I understand that, understand partnerships. I think where we are in the point in time with the McAdams' study, I would feel comfortable, I'm just going to speak for me, not for the board. I would feel comfortable if what we're looking at as far as partnerships, go through our Parks and Rec Committee, and then present it to this board from their perspective, because that's why we have the committee.
Okay.
Honestly, I mean, I'm, I'm just speaking for me. Is that, I appreciate the presentation, I truly do, but I think it should go to the Parks and Rec Committee, and they should be making their recommendations. This is going to be a big study, and everybody is going to come to that mic wanting some type of partnership with some type of business entity, either there or down at the lake. We've already had a couple that have some suggestions. I just don't, Mayor, I don't want to bypass our committees. They're, they're, they're huge committees. I know I was the chair of one, Mayor Pro Tem wants to.
I hope we'll contend. I hope we'll do that same thing when we get down to one of the items that is on our business, that it hasn't gone before the committee either. So just remember that when we get down to that item of business. All right, so we recommend, the recommendation...
What was that again?
I said, the item that we have in reference to Parks and Rec partnering with Cumberland County. B, has that been through the Parks and Rec Committee? It has not. All right, at this time, the recommendation then would be that this could go to the Parks and Rec Committee, is that favorable? We're not going to McAdams' group, we're just going to Parks and Rec. Is that something that we can allow the Swamp Dogs to do?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Parks and Rec right now is under kind of a hardship. I mean, you have people working out there overtime and a lot of things that they're dealing with, and I don't know who, at this particular time at Parks and Rec, would have the time to sit down and do a feasibility study with them. I mean, if, if you know somebody who's, has all the expertise and all that's needed for this on the committee, that's fine.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. I think we have one of the best in the county with us in Maxie Dove, and Mike Steele, who is present here tonight, are two of the best in the county. And I don't know what assistance you could give in the study. And Mike, I don't know whether you even want to get involved in that part or not, but Maxie is, is our athletic director. He's been kind of joining the team of Parks and Rec employees to, to get us over the hump of Parks and Rec. But is that meeting, Parks and Rec Advisory Committee is still meeting on a regular basis with a quorum?
I think they've had, Mr. Watson, kind of, how many meetings have they had, one or two?
We've had several. We've had several, yeah.
Well, I could have asked. You said it there.
Yeah, and the meeting's Monday.
Okay, so would it be, could they come, would you be available on Monday to come to Parks and Rec Committee meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
What time would that be?
6:30.
And they were going to meet, where will they meet?
Here.
We're meeting...
They would have to meet here.
In this room, 6:30?
I think we're scheduled for the conference room. Could we move it in to here? All right.
And Madam Mayor, I want, I want to add that one of the slides from Rachel McAdams' group was that the next steps, where we're looking at visioning, finalize the golf course conceptual site plan, draft recommendation, and all this is going to be in concert with our Parks and Rec and the committee before it's presented to the public. So I don't want to buy, and honestly, I mean this, I don't want to bypass the committee and all, because the Parks and Rec Committee is working together with the McAdams' group...
Sure.
...for these recommendations on this, on the Parks and Rec comprehensive study, as they should be, you know, looking at the master plan. And in reference to the other item, Mayor, yes, I'd recommend that the discussion about joining the Cumberland County Parks and Rec program also be entertained by the Parks and Rec Committee, and I'll make that recommendation at that time.
Okay. Yes, sir. Okay, so is it in general consensus that they can attend the meeting at 6:30 on Monday evening of Parks and Rec Committee? Do I need to vote on that, or just... Okay? Okay, all righty. So we look forward to you being there on Monday evening. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. We're very fortunate in the Town of Hope Mills that we have, we do work as a village, and we did have a lot of people that gave unending time and effort to help us through the last hurricane, and I have some special recognition certificates that I would like to present. I think I'll come down to the floor to do this.
Yeah. Mr. Chief of Charge is going to sign, just have it sit. And what I'll do is, we'll do everyone up here, and then we'll have one picture of everyone, and if they're not here, we'll make sure they get the certificates. The certificate reads, "Certificate of Appreciation, Appreciation and Recognition for Your Emergency Support during Hurricane Florence." This goes to Jim Slate.
Give me one, Tim.
And this goes to our entire Public Works Department, or their members of the Public While Mr. Cisco is coming up, the whole department received a special certificate of appreciation, recognition, your emergency support during Hurricane Florence. But those of you that were not aware, we had to have someone on-site at the dam oftentimes during all different times of day and night, so I might have to know exactly what to do. This gentleman also had to head up all of Public Works, so have a special certificate of Public Works Director, Donna Cisco, for everything he did. I do believe he did an outstanding, fantastic job, and just know that my time down at the dam with you, and with the newspapers and the TVs, but most especially, he had talked to Mark Landis and handed me the phone, so I know what to say, and just did an outstanding job, and he made us all safe because we trusted in his judgment. So thank you so much, appreciate everything. This is in recognition of the Hope Mills SERC team, the members of our SERC team here tonight?
We...
All right, and so appreciative recognition for your generous donation during Hurricane Florence, and again, thank you so much and all your team members. Next, we have appreciation to the Hope Mills Fire Department, and they did, again, they did emergency support during Hurricane Florence, but I guess, I don't see Chief Park, so the members of our fire department here?
Lopez.
Aren't you getting up?
Mr. Lopez.
I know you were out there, working as he too. Again, SERC are with you, working very closely with the Nebraska team, fantastic job as, as host, and you just had to be here to see all the activity that was taking place in this area with our fire department. Thank you, sir. We have the largest selection of them here, but I just want you to know, we cannot do without our police department. So Chief of Charge Owen, we've got, we have a little group here, we're, we'll just have to let them know, we recognize the entire police department for everything that they did during Hurricane Florence, and just know that they do so much that you just aren't aware of, and people tell me all the time that Hope Mills is so much safer than all our surrounding areas, and it's because of the many women that work for our police department. So thank you, sir. We had staff that had to come out and do things that, you know, helped pay bills, helped do reports, helped do all kinds of things. Ricky Rainey would appreciate everything you did and recognize your support during this time of Hurricane Florence also. Our staff spent many a day up here, and there was no power. Most people didn't realize that. Julius Magic, not here? April Duplin? Annie Banco? Tiffany Gilstead? All right, Tiffany is, she came in and did the special paperwork and things that we needed during this time. She is our administrative assistant to Ms. Adams, but she always puts in the extra time as she needs to. Have a special certificate. I know they couldn't be here tonight, but I just want you to know that we are very fortunate with snowball engineering. Mark Landis, who is our engineer, he was a phone call away every day. When people were doubting whether or not the dam was going to make it, we could call Mark and say, this is what it looks like, this is what is happening. He stayed in touch with Ms. Adams, he stayed in touch with Mr. Cisco, but most importantly, he would talk to me when I was down there, just to reassure, outstanding job, when really their, their work is done, because the dam is up... their, their work is done because the dam is up and ready, but he was on-call the whole time during Hurricane Florence. Maxie Dove. Maxie Dove was out there. They had to be a host, and how do you, you know, you invite a group of people in, forty-five, forty-five of them, and they get here and you have no power and the building leaks. But they managed to make them welcome, and I didn't hear anybody complain. The men and women from that, uh, Safe Water Rescue Team, they were excited, and they were really happy that they could come to Hope Mills. Kenny Tatum. Kenny Tatum, appreciation, recognition for your emergency support during Hurricane Florence also. Thank you so much. We have a special certificate, we thanked them, we had a special dinner for them before they left, but the Nebraska Task Force One, they came here forty-five strong, maybe a few or more or less, and they stayed with us, and it was amazing what they brought as far as, uh, the resources, but also the help they gave us and the security they gave us, in that they had all they needed to go out and rescue if needed. We didn't have as great a need in Hope Mills as we did during Matthew, but it was still neat to have somebody come that far. Also, the U.S. Forest Service, LEA ESF number eight, for force protection. Is there anybody here from that group? Food Lion, from Rockfish Commons. And Food Lion gave us generous donations during the, uh, Hurricane Florence. Mission Barbecue. Mission Barbecue, appreciation, recognition for your generous donation during Hurricane Florence. And I would tell you that the people from Nebraska, all they wanted to do was how could they get Mission Barbecue to go home with them? Thank you so much, and it was an honor to have you here. Branson of Hope Mills. Again, Branson's made generous donations to us and, and helped us. These restaurants that came forward and helped us when we had to feed people and we had to feed staff, made all the difference in the world. And so just know that if you have a choice of where you need to eat, you know where to go, because these are the ones that support us. Robbins O'Mane. Robbins always opens her doors and has special times. She feeds people when she shouldn't have to, but she does just 'cause she loves Hope Mills, but we appreciate everything you did during the storm also. And Lowe's of Hope Mills. Is there someone here from Lowe's of Hope Mills? Just know that, of course, Lowe's help is more than once. But I have to tell you my story, and the reason why is because this lady and I have gotten to be real close before there was a store there. There was, we went in and did a tour. But more importantly, she's helped Hope Mills any time I ask. I went up to South Umatz Church, and the Alabama Rescue Mission was there, and they were cooking, and the man, I said, "What can I do to help?" Thinking, well, he goes, "Let me go do something." He said, "I need some tools for our group that's coming in, because we don't, we cook, but we don't have rations, and we don't have gloves, and we don't have masks and wheelbarrows and, uh, suits that you need to clean up hazardous waste and stuff." I said, "Well, make me a list." So they did, and I went to Lowe's. Jennifer wasn't there, Tasha was there, and I said, "Tasha, I'd now hate to ask you this." She said, "Well, let me call Jennifer." And then what she said, Jennifer says, "Well, how many does she need of each?" I said, "I didn't tell me." So I called back to the church, and they said, "Would thirty be too many to ask?" So just know I had to go home and get my truck. They satisfied that grocery list that I had, and it made me so proud to go back and take that to those Alabama people and say, "Lowe's of Hope Mills, we do what we need to do for our town." So thank you so much. Appreciate you. And just know that without these people and, and all the people they represent, everybody in Lowe's that day that I was there, everybody in these restaurants that did so much for us, our staff, this was not only a village effort, but a team effort, and I can tell you how special that is when you know in Hope Mills that there's a need, it's answered. So thank you, thank you for the bar of my heart and the board's heart. I'm sure that they and all of us appreciate you, and just know that, uh, we hope we don't have to go through two more five-hundred-year storms back-to-back like we've done, but if we do, we know you've got our back. Thank you.
We have P eighteen dash twenty-seven, rezoning of four point twenty-two plus or minus acres from R six residential to CP planned commercial or to a more restrictive zoning district located twenty-five eighty-seven Hope Mills Road, submitted by Louis Francoz on behalf of Sotez Investments LLC owner and Greg Spears agent. And I'll turn it over at this time to Mr. McLachlan, and this would be behind tab one.
Hello, Board, uh, again, Madam Mayor. Um, as stated, this is case P eighteen twenty-eight, consideration of a rezoning request. In terms of the existing zoning, um, you see the subject property hashed, and, um, the red arrow is indicating, and you can also see the surrounding zoning. Um, to the immediate north, there's a R six A zone property, um, and a well established C three or CP zone area across the street. This is in a commercial corridor, um, zone under C three or CP district regulations, but to the rear, there are, uh, there, there is a established residential neighborhood. And then to the, um, out to the far west, outside of the town limits, there's another, um, established residential area. Um, as such, in terms of, um, this being a commercial corridor, the land uses, uh, there are several different types. You have a, um, church on the subject property, or a vacant church, auto repair establishments in the area, uh, barber shops, hair salons, um, break repair places and things of that nature. In terms of the area view, subject property is outlined in white. In terms of existing soils, subject property is outlined in red. Same with existing water sewer, subject property is outlined in red. And here are your site photographs. Now, with that said, um, in terms of existing conditions, the subject property is addressed at twenty-five eighty-seven Hope Mills Road, and it is a forty-four, a four-point-two-two acre collection of two residentially zoned parcels of land. The northernmost parcel is developed with a church, sanctuary, and two additional structures that were operational under the previous church, um, which is now closed. The southernmost parcel contains the overall parking for the site with a small accessory structure, uh, located along the rear property line. Both parcels combine front roughly three hundred and seventy-six plus or minus feet along Hope Mills Road, with the vacant church sanctuary located within the required front yard setback of what would be enforced under CP district regulations. In terms of adopted plans, um, in compliance, the twenty and thirty, twenty-thirty growth vision plan calls for urban in dislocation, it is in compliance. The southwest Cumberland land use, uh, plan recommendation is for heavy commercial. The request of CP is in compliance with that recommendation as well. Staff recommendations is approval. Cumberland County planning and inspection staff recommendation is of approval. However, at the August twenty-first Cumberland County Joint Planning Board meeting, the Joint Planning Board recommended denial of the CP district request, but approval of the C two P, um, pursuant to the following motion. In case P eighteen twenty-eight, the Cumberland County Joint Planning Board, after further discussion, moved to deny the request of CP zoning and to approve the rezoning from R six residential to C two P planned service and retail. Um, I have a series of motions that, um, I would direct you to, depending on which way you wanted to move with this case. If you wanted to move with the request of CP, I would direct you to that motion. If you wanted to, uh, stay consistent with the planning board recommendation of the C two P as opposed to CP, um, I would direct you to that as well, and obviously, the other choice would be for denial. Um, but I'd like to open up the floor to any questions that you may have. Oh, also, this is a straight rezoning, um, so that's the reason why there is no site plan attached, because, uh, under a straight rezoning, the applicant is allowed to request, um, a commercial or, uh, any designation without the requirement of a site plan.
Do you have any questions of Mr. McLachlan before we open the floor for a public hearing?
Madam Mayor, I'd just like him to put the site map back up.
Yeah.
For review.
No, you want the, there, there is no site plan, you just want maybe zoning or something like that?
The zoning. Uh, right there, yep, that one. Thank you.
Commissioner Legg, did you have a comment?
No, ma'am.
Okay, any others? Okay. At this time, I'll open the floor for a public hearing for all those persons who would like to speak in favor of this proposal, this rezoning, if you'd come to the microphone at this time.
Hello, my name's Greg Spears. I'm a commercial real estate broker with Grant Murray here in Fayetteville. Um, I'm representing Mr. Francoz. Uh, many of you know him, he owns the Samios and the shopping center behind Samios. Uh, when we, originally with the planning department, when I first contacted them, you know, they were saying the long-term plan was for CP, there was, which is C three or CP. They said everything around it was primarily CP, um, and they didn't see a problem with it, and they would recommend CP. When we get to the zoning meeting, everybody was, seemed to be in favor, and this one nice lady was scared that there might be a strip club or a flea market. And Mr. Francoz assured me that that won't be the case, but it, all of a sudden, the whole mood of the meeting switched, and they sided with her for C two P. I don't want to, you know, we don't want to create any problems, but, uh, seems like everyone was recommending CP. Uh, that was our initial request, and we prefer CP, but if we have to settle for C two P, I guess we're alright with that.
Will that work as far as what is in that current facility now?
Yes, currently, uh...
I know there's a change, there is something in the back of the church area.
In the back building, we have a gymnastics group that trains gymnastics, similar to a couple of other operations in Hope Mills and Fayetteville. And then we just signed a lease with, um, Cape Fear Christian School for the middle building. I think they currently have about eighty students, they're gonna consolidate a couple locations to there. And I've been interviewing churches, uh, you know, it seats about five hundred, so we want to establish church that we know can, can meet the obligations. And, uh, we've been close on two or three, and hopefully we'll have that finalized next month or so. But, uh, you know, he does, uh, his long-term plan, I think Mr. George Rose is doing a, a site plan, uh, I'm not sure when it would be, but he's thinking of maybe on the far-right side of the property to do a strip center, like, similar to what he's got behind Samios, just down the side there, you know, following all the building codes and all the setback requirements. But he would leave the church, and he would leave the, um, gym and such. And also, uh, I'm talking with the owner next door, which really, uh, he's looking to possibly entertain selling his property. And that would, down the road, you'd have the possibility, um, of a nice retail area there. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak in favor of this rezoning? If not, is there anyone who'd like to speak against this rezoning? Okay, then do I have a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Motion to, to close public hearing. So now I'll ask, uh, the board, is there anything, any questions that you have in reference to this?
No, I don't.
Okay.
You're good?
I'm good.
Um, also, again, if you guys are, uh, in the process of entertaining, uh, following the recommendation of the planning board, the C two P, uh, let me know, and I do have the motion, um, here to pass out to you that you would read into the record.
That would be my intent, Madam Mayor.
Is that not in our packet?
It was a, a mixed, a miscommunication in what you saw on the last page of my staff report, so I retyped it.
On page seven, I think.
Yeah, I don't have the page number, because it's...
It should be the fir, right under the, on the first page of the action memo from the county. I just retyped it and, and was gonna give it back out just in case, so I didn't want to end up in any confusion between there and my staff report. So if you have that, then that is the recommendation where it says in case of eighteen twenty-eight.
And just so to clarify, the, as far as a school, a church, a gym, in that area, with the possibility of a shopping center beside it, is that gonna, would that C two P zoning mean that the other section of land that he may want to make, uh, a shopping center, is that gonna put limitations on that?
No, all those uses are allowed under C two P.
Okay.
Um, and it would have to come back to you.
My concern is, you really can't put near a church, you're not gonna be able to put a, uh...
Those uses.
A bar, a strip joint, you can't do that.
And it would have to come back to you guys.
I mean, there's a school right across the street, you can't put that in front of a school either. There's, uh, you know, directly in front of the school is, um, uh, directly in front of this church is the school, so that limits what you can do on that site just because of the ordinance reference to, uh, churches and schools. So just so...
And because, um, if there's future development, now, if they develop something inside that building, it's different, but if there's another development built, it would have to come back to you guys for site plan approval, um, for that portion of the development.
Okay, any other questions or thoughts or concerns? If not, do we have a motion?
This is just a straight motion?
Yeah, it's the, he's got the motions in there.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Motion for P eighteen dash twenty-eight, rezoning of four-point-two-two acres from R six A residential to C two P. Am I right? Ah, give me the right one now, because that's the one we're going with. Okay. In case P eighteen twenty-eight, the Cumberland County Joint Planning Board recommends denial of the rezoning from R six A residential to CP planned commercial, and approval of the rezoning from R six A residential to C two P planned service and retail, and find it is consistent with the text of the Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan 2014, which recommends strip commercial along Hope Mills Road, and is consistent with the location criteria for light commercial in the land use policies plan, and further find that approval of C two P is reasonable and in the public interest, because the district recommended will restrict the allowable uses to those that would be in harmony with the existing commercial uses in the area without allowing the heavy commercial that would not be compatible with the remaining residential zone properties. That is the motion, Mayor.
And also state, just for the record, that you are following the recommendation of the Joint Planning Board.
Also, my motion includes following the recommendations of the Cumberland County Joint Planning Board recommendations.
Okay, so have the motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have public comments. Everyone that has signed up, you're allowed three minutes per speaker. If you'll come to the microphone, state your name and address, and our first person is
Good evening, uh, Mayor and Town Commissioners, Town Staff. I'm Sally Bailey, and I live at fifty-eight fifty-seven Hunting Ridge Road, Hope Mills, and I have had the pleasure to chair the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. I come to y'all tonight, and I think you've kind of got ahead of me, okay, I appreciate that, okay, but let me go ahead and tell you. Um, I'm pretty much found out in the last few days that there's a chance that Cumberland County may be talking to Hope Mills about joining in with their Parks and Rec. Uh, the Hope, the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee has not heard anything about it. Uh, there's only a couple that have heard little pieces of it, and I came tonight to ask y'all to take it to the Parks and Rec. to take it to the Parks and Rec and let us look at the program, also to the DCSA Youth Association because that involves them also. Let's sit down and talk about this, give you our recommendations on it. We have some good volunteers in both, in all of Hope Mills, and I think we have the knowledge, the staff to do it with. I think most of our volunteers really care for Hope Mills, and you think of all the time that we have lived here and been here and worked for Hope Mills, gives us a lot of experience. I appreciate tonight the fact that y'all did talk about this. This is very interesting. My eyes a little perked up over that one, okay? I thought, this is pretty cool, okay? I can't believe they want to play ball with us, okay? So, that was interesting, but I do appreciate that, that you are going to give us the chance to look at this, talk about it, give our recommendations back to the board and to the manager. I think we can handle it, people, okay? Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Sally.
Okay, Elizabeth Cooper.
My name is Elizabeth Cooper. I live at 4413 Goldenrod Court, Parkton, North Carolina, in the Steeple Chase subdivision. I come today because I'm very concerned about some of the things that the board is considering and has considered recently. My mama always said that you can't complain about something unless you're willing to do something to change it, and that is why I'm here. I'm making my voice heard and the voice of people I know. I myself have coached softball and baseball with Mr. Legg here in Hope Mills. My husband has. My husband's done, we've done spring ball and fall ball. We've dealt with Fayetteville. When you do fall ball, it's pretty much a Cumberland County-run thing. There's so much bureaucracy when you're dealing with adding Cumberland County onto the mix of our Parks and Rec programming that we have here, and I, for one, am against completely turning any of our assets, our Parks and Rec programming, our Parks and Rec community. That's so much of what people come to Hope Mills for. People move here because of the Parks and Rec Department that we have, and the fact that our people have the ability just to go to the Parks and Rec Department and talk to somebody and actually have action and not have to wait to go through the Cumberland County process, like it happens with fall ball. It always, fall ball is always running behind because we're waiting for Cumberland County to finish their rosters and things of that nature. I don't want to see that happen to all of our sporting activities that we have here. And if you put that extra layer of bureaucracy in between us and our sports programs, you're going to have a lot of very unhappy citizens, okay? When I elect people, when I go to the poll and I vote for people, I vote for people who are here to serve, serve their community, not individuals, not friends, not pals. I want people who are worried about families who live here, who have young children, and want to do T-ball, and want to do softball, and want to, you know, develop those skills at the rec level so that when they get to middle school and high school, they can really shine. If you take that away from this community, it's going to come back when election comes around. So, I would seriously consider that. The other issue, too, is opportunity. You know, you're serving the community, you should be serving us up with all kinds of opportunities. You turn down Lone Survivor, okay? There was an excellent opportunity. Now, Swamp Dogs come to you, they're like, hey, we can do concerts. What was in that, that thing that McAdams is looking at? Wasn't baseball parks, which I love baseball, I'm not saying I don't, but it was all those activities that Swamp Dogs can bring to our community. We are growing, we are thriving. We need to have opportunities that grow and thrive with us, not what a few people think, oh, no, let's not, you know, let's lock down this property by putting a lease on it so we can't develop it. Let's, you know, not pay for handicap accessibility because it's too much and share this burden with Cumberland County, but you're giving away the future of our town. Stop. Give us the chance to grow and be all that we can be. This is Hope Mills. Where's the hope? I'm not seeing it. Thank you.
Greeley Mitchell.
Greeley Mitchell, 4056 Weimelutha Drive. When I look at this board, I look at the decisions that y'all have made, and I ask myself all the time, is it based on fact? Is it based on truth? We need vision, not division. I voted for you all so that you all can do what is best for the town, what's best for the people. If you continue like you've been going, we are going to go down a deep slope, and we will not be able to recover. If you think I'm lying, go do the research. You see, many towns like this is suffering because you did not do due diligence to make decisions based on fact, based on truth. That's all you have to do every time you make a decision. If you don't know, you don't understand, you research it. Before I oppose, before I speak out against anything, I research it. Takes a lot of time, a lot of due diligence, and I've seen some of y'all do the same thing. All I ask for is the facts and the truth. That's all the people want. We, the people, demand the truth. We, the people, demand the facts. Without the facts, how can you make a decision? Without looking at those facts and considering the facts, how can you give me the truth? Some of y'all have not given me the truth, and that right there pisses me off. Election is coming. It is time for y'all to do the right thing, make the right choices. Did y'all know on the battlefield, one of my toughest decisions was to tell the commanding general, commanding officer? No, because the facts did not support that decision, sir. If you make that decision, we are all going to suffer. I believe in mission completion, not mission failures, not mission stoppers. And right now, we have both, mission stoppers and mission failure inside this town, which is something I refuse to live with. And I'm sure there's many citizens refuse to accept it and refuse to live with it. Thank you, Commissioner Bellflower, for recommending that it go before that committee, no matter what the decision is. If it has an impact with or through that committee, it should go by that committee. Let them discuss it, let them research it, let them bring it back to you so that you can make a decision based on the facts and information they collect together. We're not doing that, people. Why have committees if you're not going to use them? Don't waste my time. I'm involved in so many activities in and around this town. I try to be involved because, like Elizabeth said, you can't complain if you don't get involved. When I get in the mud, I don't mind getting dirty. If you want my help, need my help, I will give it to you. Don't take it personal. You give me the truth and the facts, whether I like it or not, I'm going to support that decision. It doesn't matter what it is. But all I need, all I want is the truth. I'm done.
Thank you, sir. Then concludes our public comments. Next, we have our consent agenda. Is there anything that you would like to be moved from our consent agenda? I will read it first. Consideration of approval for the minutes from September 5th, 2018, special meeting. Consideration of approval for repair to ladder truck by CW Williamson Company. The cost is $16,120.73, and funds are available with current year's budget. Consideration of approval of the state applicant disaster assistance agreement and resolution 28-22, designation of applicants as agent as the finance director. Consideration to accept the August and September 2018 financial statements. Consideration of approval of resolution 2018-19 for a safe and courteous Halloween. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
So moved.
All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Old Business, consideration of ordinance amendment number 2018-08 regarding serving alcohol on tap and property, and that is behind tab seven. Do we have any, I know that the attorney was tasked with making sure this was appropriate. Do you have anything to add or anything, any questions that you may have of our attorney at this time?
I'll just point out, this only applies to town-sponsored events, and it allows the town manager to impose conditions on the program, such as time, place, restrictions to keep it grounded to certain areas.
And what's the definition of unfortified wine exactly?
That's a good point, I'm not exactly sure, but that's statute, that's what we're allowed to regulate.
Okay.
Fortified wine, I'm not... In fact, you did, like, we're allowed to regulate it.
Deputy Chief, you got an opinion on that?
Sir?
Could you tell us what unfortified wine is, since you had a wine shop at one time?
Wait, wait.
Yes, sir. Unfortified wine is the wine that you normally consider to be the higher-end wines. Yeah, the lower-end wines are the ones that are higher in sugar and therefore higher in alcohol, so consumption of the higher alcohol beverage is going to result in intoxication, whereas the unfortified wine is going to take much longer, much more beverage.
Thank you.
Is that clear?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would like for this board to really think hard before they vote on this. We have a lot of children that come to these events, and that's why most of the parents bring their kids to these events. I don't want it to be for the parents to come to the place to get high. Are we going to be liable if someone has too much to drink and leaves here, has an accident, and kills or injures someone? Are we going to be liable for that? It happens in a bar, if they get in there and they get soused, and they drive out of there, they have an accident, my question would just be, to what extent are we liable or not liable?
I don't believe we'd be liable because what this is allowing us to do is to permit someone else to sell the alcohol, so someone else would be, you know, it wouldn't be town staff serving, it would be, you know, a local, whatever, serving here. It wouldn't be the town who actually makes the decision as to whether someone gets an obligation. And I'll also point out, one of the restrictions you could have is permanent, is a ticket limit, which is a common restriction at these events. You know, you get, you only get two tickets, or you only get, you only got two years or something along those lines. So, those types of restrictions can be included in the program.
What keeps them coming back buying two more tickets?
You could do, you know, stamp or wristband, I mean, is there any foolproof system that... But I don't believe the town would be liable if someone was ever served, because it would be the town who was doing the serving, permitting someone else to allow it.
Does that vendor have to pay a permit fee?
We don't have a fee set forth in here. We want to have a fee, we could...
Well, that was my question, if they, everybody else out there has to have a permit fee to rent a booth area, area to set their goods on. If we charge a permit fee, then we're renting them property to sell alcohol on, and that's where my question comes into... I'm sorry, Ms. Adams, what was that?
I think for purposes of, for the Old Mill Day, we were, we were not considering charging a fee.
But we would in the future.
I don't know, that's up to you all.
Okay. And you're going to have a line of people wanting in for nothing to set up a booth. Anyway, my vote is still no to selling alcohol in front of kids.
Mayor Warner?
Yes, ma'am.
May I make a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
I, in a way, I agree with Mr. Legg as far as exposing children to alcohol and everything like that, but if you look around, if the parents take their children to any restaurant, Samios or anyplace like that, you can't hide your children from everything, because if you go to a restaurant to eat dinner, eat supper, they have alcohol, they have wine, and you have to show responsibility to the parents and the people that's doing this. And I don't think you can, you just have to use common sense with it, and I don't see anything wrong with it myself. And I know that if they go in and drink at Samios and they have too much, Samios is not liable for it, or anybody else that I know of. That's all.
Any other...
Madam Mayor, then we also, through our process, we'll make sure each of these vendors have a valid ALE license.
This, all this stuff is allowed them to sell, but they're already ready to sell at this particular location.
Right. I'll make a motion that we approve this ordinance amendment 2018-08, Chapter 6, alcoholic beverages, Section 6-2, consumption in public places, disposal of containers.
Can I have a motion, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, it's four to one. Okay, next thing on the agenda is discussion regarding borrowing long-term debt versus a bond referendum for our Parks and Recreation capital needs and public safety building funding. And I guess, do you have, turn it over to...
Turn it over to Mayor Pro Tem Mitchell. I put some information in there for your, for the words consideration.
And all we're doing really in this process, through, when we received the comprehensive plan, it was brought to our attention that our Parks and Rec revenue fee structure, that revenue was down by some 25, 30% over the last three to four years, and that we, of course subsidize our, beyond the Parks and Rec tax, and those revenues, we subsidize our Parks and Rec Department by something like a million dollars a year. And it was mentioned during the comprehensive plan workshop that we might possibly talk about these things here, about either doing the bond referendum, having, well, that's actually on the next tab, I guess. This one's about the, just talking with Parks and Rec, and I absolutely have no problem Parks and Rec. In fact, I wanted a committee, and I apologize, I didn't put Parks and Rec on there. Parks and Rec would be the appropriate committee to have discussions with the county, appropriate county people, along with staff.
Mr. Temple.
We have a liaison in Commissioner Larson, I believe, with the Parks and Rec Committee already, from the, representing our board, and just to keep an open mind on everything. Our main objective is not, absolutely not, to provide less services or stagnant services to our citizens. Our objective is to accelerate those services and to provide as many amenities as possible in our area. We've all suffered since 2008, since the bubble burst. We've all seen depreciation in our properties. What raises real estate values and real estate valuations, which also raises revenue in turn for our town, is an increase in our property values. While our property values aren't going to go up until we have more amenities for our citizens, is part of that process. You know, I've been a CPA, and that's a certified public accountant, been doing strategic business planning, believe it or not, for 33 years. I've got companies bigger than the town of Hope Mills. I didn't fall off the wagon yesterday. I don't make snap decisions. Everything I look at for us is the same advice I give to my clients. What's the win-win for Hope Mills? I have to see the win-win. I have to see return on investment. I have to see how it best serves our citizens. And that goes back to economic development. If they're talking economic development, what specifically is the economic development for town of Hope Mills? If it's Parks and Rec, what specifically can we do? You know, the city of Fayetteville just passed their bonds and provided splash pads and swimming pools for entire city of Fayetteville. And we also talked about utilization. My first term as Mayor Pro Tem, quickly discovered that more county residents use our senior services and many of our other services, and we welcome them, but they're not the ones paying into our system to provide for the overhead that we must cover. And we, and we have, I have a fellow graduate in Pine Forest that sits as an alderman on Spring Lake, and we don't want to be charged. on Spring Lake, and we don't want to be charging seventy-two cents on the hundred for property taxes to pay for infrastructure, public, uh, you know, we do what we have to for public services and first responders, but, um, we don't want to have that kind of tax rate necessarily for Parks and Rec if we can accomplish that by other means. And so certainly, I like what Commissioner Beryl Flowers has said and what Ms. Bailey has said, and, um, the other citizen here. So, I would like, if that's okay with you guys, we can just push that down to the, um, to our committee, which would be the right thing to do.
Are we talking about tab nine now?
She's talking about eight, A, seven, A, which would be...
I guess I'm covering both of them.
Because of the Parks and Recreation Capital Needs, run that through the committee also. And then possibly, one other committee that could go through is our Finance Committee. That's always what we've tried to do in the past, is run it through Finance Committee, and then let the Finance Committee be a part of bringing that back to the board, too. So, um, I know, uh, some of this has been previously discussed, has been, you know, motions and saying next to me that the supermajority would take this through anyway, but I don't believe that's appropriate on, when we have issues like this that affect our public. I also do believe that we have been very comfortable with the fact that our commercial development has equalized out our property taxes, which we did not have to raise taxes the last two years, and the reason being is because unlike the cities around us, our commercial development balanced it out for us. So, what I meant, hearing from you, Mayor Pro Tem Mitchell, is that these would be appropriate to be sent back to Parks and Rec Committee?
Both of these items, and also, well, we haven't really had a Finance Committee meeting.
Well, we can...
Maybe, have we had one Finance Committee meeting, uh, this year, maybe?
We have that, yeah, we have.
With, um, with the Charlotte Robinson Group?
Yeah.
Okay.
So...
So, at some point, we might want to...
Okay.
Bring finance into it as well, obviously.
All right, so these two items, A and B, since Mayor Pro Tem Mitchell requested those to be put on the agenda, then Mayor Pro Tem Mitchell can request that they would be referred to the Parks and Rec Committee. And I guess that public safety building funding would be tied into that because it would all, would have to have probably two separate types of funding, but we could signify that for Finance Committee, maybe?
I'm looking for three paths. You know, sustainability, what we're doing right now, in moderation, um, join the county, what's that option look like, what's the, what's the pros and cons of that, and then the, and then the third would be, well, it could be three or four, it could be, if we do a bond, is that even sustainable? I also mentioned, uh, bringing the public safety building into that mix. Is it sustainable based on our growth, and, um, or just long-term debt, either one? Um, I know it might be costly to do a bond. Um, I don't think in the history of Hope Mills, I don't know that we've ever done a bond in probably fifty-five years of getting audited financial statements.
We haven't done one.
I don't think so.
We do have someone that could, could come and explain the procedure about the bonding and what that would entail.
That's what I was going to ask you, Mayor Pro Tem.
On that presentation, would you like for that person to come?
I think so.
To you, to the Finance Committee, or to the Parks and Rec Committee?
Parks and Rec.
It may be good to have a joint meeting of those two committees and this board.
We could do a workshop, if you don't...
A workshop.
If that's okay with everybody.
We'd want to hear what, you know, how it would even work, even looking at each direction. You know, the, we'd need a county person to tell us how that would work, and we'd need to know the finances on the other direction.
Would that not be something we could direct the town manager to oversee and get that information? I mean, that would, to me, that would have been who we would have gone to first to establish the feasibility of this anyway. So, those contacts?
Yeah, again, we're just looking at, just looking at options here, we're not committing to anything, but, um, certainly, we cherish the advice of our committees and, um, and those experts with the League of Municipalities or City of Fayetteville that have been through this process, or County, Parks and Rec.
Yeah, go ahead.
I've been, um, since y'all have been bringing up on occasion about Parks and Rec bonds, I went ahead and contacted a, um, a person that's helped me through the bond process before, and he's willing to come in. His company pretty much guides you through the process, since we've never issued bonds here in Hope Mills before. Before you do that, you actually have to go through a bond rating process first, and get a bond rating.
Mm-hmm.
Then you go through the process of actually getting ready to issue bonds, having the referendum and all the process. What he would do at this point is just explain the process. We're not committing anything, there's no feasibility study, it's not even saying what we're able to do, it's just saying, here's the process, how long it takes, what you have to do at what interval, as far as, you know, what it would take to even issue bonds. So, if we started the process, say, next month, it might be two years later before we're actually issuing the bonds. It could take that long. So, he would just explain, here's the step-by-step process of what you have to do.
So, could we incorporate him in a workshop?
You wouldn't need to do it at a workshop necessarily, it's just information. I mean, if you want to do it at a workshop, that's fine, but it's just information about the process. So, we'd all understand...
I noticed in our tab here, you said he could come on the December third regular meeting, so would that not be appropriate, let him come during a regular meeting and do a presentation?
He could do a presentation at the meeting, or we could meet an hour before and, and go through it at that time, and have the Parks and Rec Committee, you know, everybody that's involved could hear the process.
Could we invite them to the regular meeting so that then our general public could also hear?
We could do that, too.
Because I think that way, this is going to be interesting for those people that...
Right.
Would be responsible.
But I want to make sure it's not a feasibility study, or even seeing what we're able to do. It's just explaining the process.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I think it'd be great on December third, because you're going to also present information to the board about USDA financing for the public...
As for the public safety facility, yes.
Yeah, you're going to present on the same night, so be back-to-back briefings. Both information for the board.
That'd be good.
So, yeah, I agree with both of them, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
On December third.
All righty, so we'll have those, that, those two presentations on our agenda for December third, and then these two items will be moved into Parks and Rec Committee for meeting. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you, sir, thank you so much. All right, now we move to item C, discussion of long-term lease of municipal-owned property and the sale of municipal property requested by Commissioner Larson, along with, I read the request for ordinance. Um, I guess, turn it over to you.
Um, I've asked this to be placed on the agenda, agenda, to emphasize the importance of protecting our town's assets and our property and resources. So, I would like to make a motion, whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Town of Hope Mills believe that the consideration of the sale or long-term lease of real property owned by the town is an issue that requires input from all elected officials. Now, therefore, be it ordained that the Board of Commissioners shall not discuss or consider the sale or long-term lease of any real property owned by the Town of Hope Mills unless the full Board of Commissioners is present for the discussion. For purposes of this ordinance, long-term lease is defined as any lease longer than one year. So, basically, because we all represent the people, that it would just require all five of us voting, board members, excuse me, change, sorry about that, to be present before we could address a proposal or any kind of offer to lease or buy municipal property.
Would that be per exception of, of maybe sports fields or the gymnasium on a weekend basis or a daily basis?
Yes, only over a year.
Okay, over a year.
And in speaking to Mr. Hartzog, uh, if we were to have a lease for three years, that is something that we can agree in the terms of their contract if we want to do that, but otherwise, those leases would come back every year to be reevaluated.
So, what you're saying is there has to be five board members here for this to take place, other than, uh, say, one board member was absent and you couldn't entertain any kind of business right before the board? Is that what you're saying?
Just the proposal, not the vote or of the, we just would wait until all five members are there to agree to a lease or sale of municipal property.
Don't we generally do that now?
It is, I mean, I, I think that's what we have to do.
Generally, what we do now is...
You can't, you can't...
Proposal comes in, it comes before the board.
Yeah, and the board has to make that decision, and, uh, you can, if there's a, we, if there's a reason for, uh, having, making sure all five are here, you just postpone the vote until you get the additional member here. I don't think we need an ordinance tying that into, uh, a requirement, because that's required already. Isn't it required that it has to come before the full board, and you can't make a, you couldn't bring something, and that has to be public?
You only have to have a quorum.
But, I mean, it has to be public, though, for you to make that decision to lease or sell property. You'd have to make that out in the open, so it wouldn't be something that would not have, uh, the public input as far as being able to see and hear what was going on. So, I don't know that...
As I understand the proposed ordinance, and, um, and I'm not speaking in favor or opposed to it, but, uh, as I understand what it is, it would be instead of requiring a quorum, you know, for, most of the time, as long as you have a quorum of, of the board, you can vote on anything, this would just require all five board members.
It doesn't change the vote, it, the vote only requires the majority, but it just requires all of us to be here to hear the proposal.
I think we faced that with the process that we were, although it had nothing to do with town property, the process with, uh, the Legion Road Walmart, when it came up, we had votes going on with only three or four people here, and everybody wasn't heard.
Yeah, I just think when each one of us represents different constituents, to make decisions of such magnitude and say that, well, you constituents don't really matter, but these four up here to represent these constituents does matter, I, I think that's, um, slap in the face to some of the vote, the people that do take the time to come out to vote.
So, Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Any proposal for real property owned by the Town of Hope Mills, from anybody, is presented to the town, and then from there, it will not hit the agenda unless a full board is present. Is that the way that I'm reading this?
Correct.
And we don't know if it's going to be a full board or not that night.
And you can always fix it so there isn't.
I mean, you don't know.
That's something that we were faced with before, if you need a supermajority, somebody's just sick, don't come.
Don't come, I, I...
I mean, that, that makes it legal not to, to be there to vote, because you, if you don't have a quorum, if you don't have all five, you don't have to do it.
So, this would kick this can down the road until there were five.
Why wouldn't there be?
It could, I mean, I, I don't know, I, I understand the spirit of it, that we want all the, the full board here, but we're kind of tying the board to a proposal that, well, if there's not five here, you can't hear it, so it'll have to come off the agenda, go on the next one, and then the next one. And then if somebody up here should take something personal and say, well, I don't like the proposal, I don't want to be here, and if one of us is not here, then that means the whole board can't hear it.
That's right.
I, I, that's just my thought, I...
We have this in a form of a motion?
That's just my thought, it just truly is.
And so, I guess, is there any other discussion? So, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, this does require a supermajority in order for it to be passed, so it does not pass.
Do I need to place it on for the next agenda? Okay, thank you.
Next, we have consideration of an annexation petition adoption of a resolution instructing the town clerk to investigate the sufficiency, and this is behind tab eleven. Any discussion in reference to this?
Let me get my machine down here.
Okay. This is, the Town of Hope Mills received a voluntary annexation petition for two-point-oh-eight acres of land associated with proposed Chick-fil-A development located at Hope Mills Road in, in Hope Mills. This would be a contiguous annexation. Um, once the board accepts the annexation request, the resolution directing the town clerk to investigate sufficiency of petitions is required. Um, so if y'all accept the request for annexation, we need to make a motion to adopt and direct the clerk to investigate the petition received under GS one sixty-eight dash thirty-one.
Oh, yes, I'll make that, you got that?
I'll make that motion.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion, and all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Our next is consideration of approval of resolution number twenty-eighteen dash twenty, Chick-fil-A annexation to set a public hearing date.
And, Madam Mayor, we left the, normally on these resolutions, we would have filled in the date, but we left that blank because we knew coming up on the agenda that you all were going to be discussing the November, the second meeting in November, which is typically when we have our public hearings. There is nothing that prevents this public hearing from being heard the first meeting in December. Um, that's totally out of your pleasure.
I would, I would like to just, uh, point of consideration to the board, one is that the November fifth meeting, that we do have, uh, Board of Elections going to need to move in here, and however late that meeting is, it would make it, uh, for them, late hours, and if we're going to have the election process in this room, I would like for it to go smoothly, and especially since it's, it always has in Hope Mills, but with new site, they're going to have to be familiarized with everything here. My thoughts are, if, if, if we were to honor the request of Commissioner Legg, then could it be feasible that instead of having such a long period of time, that what we do is move that November fifth meeting to the following meeting, the following week, on November thirteenth, and then let that be both meetings for November, and on that, put the hearing for this, is that enough time to do that? Does that make sense? And the reason I said the thirteenth is because the twelfth is a holiday.
Right.
Okay, that's a Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday, right. My thoughts are, the fifth, it would be, to, to me, would be a good time to move that meeting because of the Board of Elections needing this room, uh, and however late we would be here, it would be difficult to, to say, but if we move that meeting, then, uh, what would happen is it would not be such a long time between, um, that November nineteenth meeting cancellation, till we have our December meeting. Thoughts from the board, and then that would be my recommendation that we hold that, uh, public hearing on that November thirteenth. Is that enough time?
That's the key, Mayor, is it enough time?
Yeah, it should be.
Uh, that, as I was counting it, I was thinking it would be, because today's the twenty-second, if it takes ten days, that thirteenth would give us time, and then that way, uh, the much anticipated, um, don't want to say the word even, we've said it so many times and hoped it was coming to Hope Mills, but, uh, what's the board's wishes on that, does that...
Oh, I agree with you, Mayor, because we've got a couple of big presentations coming up on December third that we already know about, so if this can work, one meeting, it's a win-win. Win, Mayor Pro Tem.
That doesn't, that doesn't work for me, that date.
What is it, the twelfth?
The thirteenth. The twelfth is a holiday.
It won't work for me, that date, because I'd be pulling out here on the sixth.
Well, then, do you want to just leave both meetings in place and then schedule the hearing for, uh, that November nineteenth?
That don't work for me either, Mayor, I'm, I'm going to be gone for almost a whole month of November.
Well, we'll just give you an excused absence.
We can have the public hearing December third, that's not an issue, but it's up to you all.
That's better for me, December third.
Yeah, that'd be work for me.
Better work for me. That'll work for me.
Either day works for me. I was just trying to make it so it would be sooner rather than later. So what's the thoughts? Are we gonna just keep our normal schedule? That way, I think we've canceled enough meetings as it is that we just keep November 5th and November 19th, and we'll just...
That, that's a separate item.
Okay, but I mean, for the Chick-fil-A hearing, gonna set that for December 3rd? Is that what we're hearing?
We need to adopt the resolution, adopting the resolution setting the public hearing date.
Could we set it for December 19th? I mean, November 19th? November 5th would be too soon. But could we set it for November 19th?
Do it for December 3rd because we don't know, we haven't gotten to the other tab yet.
Is it gonna, is that gonna require a supermajority vote on mine?
It's just, it's just a public hearing.
Just a 3 to 2, or what?
It's a, it's a public hearing.
Okay, it's not a zoning.
An annexation ordinance.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve resolution number 2018-21 fixing the date of the public hearing for 7:00 PM, December 3rd, 2018. For, that'd be resolution, I get the number, okay? That's 21.
Okay, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed? Seeing none. Next, we have the cancellations, reschedule November 19th meeting. So what's the wishes of the board?
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes, sir.
One reason I, I want to do this is I wouldn't be present, and I would, I'd love to be present. This is something I do every year, happens since 1963, and I plan on continuing. And I think also it was a little conflict for the town manager, who has a little cooking to do near that date. So I thought if we just missed the 19th meeting and forwarded that stuff to December the 3rd, I don't see a major problem with it, but it's up to this board.
Is that your motion?
Yes, sir. I make that motion that we cancel the November 19th meeting and forward that information to December 3rd.
I have a motion. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Any opposed? Mr. Edwards, are you voting?
I won't be here.
She won't be here? Okay.
She has another reason. I didn't know that. I'm sorry.
And as far as that meeting, there's no thoughts of rescheduling it any other time? Just moving it to the 3rd?
So we're still gonna have that?
Point of order, she still needs to vote.
Okay, well, she, by, it doesn't matter. By not voting, she's voted.
I'm not gonna be here.
You still have the obligation to vote? Right, man? Okay, just make sure.
Okay. All righty, consideration of nominations for Veterans Affairs Commission as presented by the nominating committee. So I'll turn that over to the nominating committee.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we had three applicants. We met at 5:30, and we had three applicants. Two of them are, don't live in town, but we still like to add them as liaisons, non-voting, if that's possible. We have, I think it's Master Sergeant, I mean Sergeant Major Clinton Murray. He lives in the county, and he would like to be on the Veteran Affairs Committee. And we've got Mr. Jim Blevins, and he does live in town and would like to be on the Veterans Committee. And then we got Bill Green, who is the current Quartermaster for the Post 10630, and he lives in the county, but we'd like him to also be considered for liaison. And, no, no, we have a liaison currently from the 10630, but if we don't, we need to, I think, at all times, given everything they've done for Hope Mills.
Is that a motion?
That's, that's our motion to approve. All three, only, only Mr. Blevins would be a voting member and would qualify for quorum, purposes of quorum.
How many more vacancies do you have?
None.
We lost Jim Clark recently, right?
Two, so you have another, you know the vacancies.
Still have two.
So you still have a quorum for voting?
Adding Mr., adding Mr. Blevins would, would give the, would give the quorum.
To five, right?
Then we got two, two other vacancies.
Well, the quorum would be three with the, with the seats of, five seats filled, correct, that can vote? That would be your quorum until we get the others seats filled. But we certainly like to have the others, given all their experience and knowledge, that that's the will of the board. So that's our, our motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have any other discussion? Not all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed, welcome aboard Mr. Blevins. Next, we have naming of buildings, and Mr. Hartsock, do you have that information? Or just do you give it to Commissioner Legg, or what do we need to know in reference to that?
I believe there is a policy or ordinance that we passed last year about naming public buildings, and we crack it located immediately before the meeting started tonight, but we'll never do so. We can have that by the next meeting, certainly. I can't recall exactly what the policy is, if I'm slightly off my head, but the policy that we passed.
Okay, so that would be at the November 5th meeting? So Commissioner Legg, would you like that moved to the December 3rd meeting? Or you're gonna be here November 5th?
Please, I'll be here November 5th.
Okay, he'll be here November 5th, so that's, okay.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Mayor, can I speak on that in a second?
Sure.
What I would like to do is honor a very dear friend of mine, Gary Dove, that I know all of you are familiar with, with the renaming of the building at Braar Park after him or in his name. He has served this town for years and years and years. Has been the, the chairman of the Parks and Recreation Committee for...
Over 30.
A bunch of years. And he's worked at Braar Park, maintaining the, the records for the town staff, the Parks and Recreation staff. And he was very well-liked and appreciated, and I'm sure that the people of this town would, would appreciate something named after Mr. Dove. So I would ask the, my board members to think about that, and if you would, bring the stuff back to us and let us act on that. And I, I assume, maybe I should ask Mr. Dove, you have a problem with naming the building after your father? Okay, answer's no. You don't have a problem with it. I would be honored if somebody named the building after my dad. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, board.
Okay, if you'll bring that back to us, November 5th, what's required?
I think the last action was we added Mr. Ors's name to this room with Bill Luther, just the previous board, October, September.
That was done prior to the ordinance, though. The ordinance was done after that was taken because there wasn't a, we didn't have something in place, and they said we needed to, some standards.
Yeah, we did something, but I don't remember what it was.
Yeah, because if you'll remember, Mayor, Mayor Protem Gorman, I think, requested us to look at, "We don't have a standard. We don't have anything to go by." Okay, all right, next, we have our manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Board of Commissioners. Phase two of Hope Mills Lake Park, Mr. Fleming was on site on October the 18th, making additional measurements of the ramp area for the kayak launch and access down the bulkhead. Also, he was studying the layout for a single access steps approximately midway, the exact location to be determined by grading around the gazebo. In addition, he was reviewing the feasibility of placing the handicap access adjacent to the steps with a hardened surface within the swimming area. Town Hall, air conditioning system, this has been, had been postponed for cooler weather, and we are currently working on coordinating a date to schedule the work to begin. Parks and Rec building, as you know, the building was damaged due to Hurricane Florence. It has been discovered that several sections of the heat and air ducts need to be replaced. We are in the process now of receiving bids on the heat and air duct replacement. And in addition to that, we are accepting bids on the new roofing. We currently do not have a timeframe for the completion until the bids for the replacement of the heat and air ducts are in and we select a contractor. Once the heat and air ducts are replaced, we will then replace the carpet and give time for the Parks and Rec staff to move the furniture and fixtures back in before we can open the center. We believe that we can move forward with that process without having the repairs to the roof as the roof has been patched and so far it appears to be holding, but we are trying to move quickly on that. ADA Transition Program, Interim Public Works Director Don Sisko will be attending a workshop on the ADA transition on the program on November the 5th. I have some updates concerning some zoning cases that the Cumberland County Joint Planning Board heard. Case P 1838, Initial Zoning of Chick-fil-A. This was recommended for approval by the Cumberland County Joint Planning Board on October the 16th. The case is scheduled to be heard by the Town of Hope Mills now that we've canceled the November 19th at the December 3rd meeting. The proposed annexation of this development will run concurrently with the initial zoning to be approved on the same hearing date. Case P 1830, Initial Zoning of Dirtbag Ales. This was also recommended for approval by the Cumberland County Joint Planning Board on October the 16th. This case is also scheduled to be heard by the Hope Mills Board of Commissioners at the December 3rd regular meeting. This is the, this development has already been approved for annexation, and so this is the final step in the zoning process. Case P 1840, The Sign Ordinance Amendment. This case was heard by the Cumberland County Joint Planning Board at the October 16th hearing. We have been informed that this case is going to be sent back to the Board of Commissioners for further review and discussion. Staff will update the board when we have more information available. Circle K Gas Station, staff has received a full set of construction drawings on a new proposed Circle K gas station at 674 Chickenfoot Road. This site is located within the Town of Hope Mills limits and is already zoned for commercial use. Staff will update the Board of Commissioners as construction progresses. Development and Planning Administrator Chancellor McLaughlin was officially sworn in on Thursday, October the 18th to the Board of Directors for Action Pathways Incorporated. Presentation at that meeting included a presentation by the Fayetteville Cumberland Reentry Council, which is an agency that assists formerly incarcerated individuals to get back on their feet with housing, employment, education, training, family support, healthcare service, and healthcare services. The filing approvals were granted during that meeting. 2018 Risk Management Report, 2018 Performance Quality Improvement Report, Acceptance of the 2017 Annual Report, Weatherization Budget Amendment, Review of Strategic Plan, Mission, and Vision Statements, Changes to the Purchasing Manual on Procurement Process, and an approval to enter into a memorandum of agreement with North Carolina Community Action Association for the Blue Cross Blue Shield Healthy Homes Initiative for $468,000. This program is geared towards providing families with home repairs and safety updates crucial to protecting their health by remedying unsuspected causes of illnesses hidden within the homes of vulnerable North Carolinians across 56 counties. Each participant is eligible to receive up to $2,500 in home health and safety repairs through this two-year program. The Red Cross is in need of volunteers to assist in cleaning cots from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM this Saturday, October the 27th, at the Old Pepsi Warehouse located at 131 Pepsi Lane in Fayetteville. And just a reminder, in addition, I know on the agenda, we have Old Mills Day, the, the street dance and all of that, but the Hope Mills Fire Department is hosting the Cumberland County Sheriff's Department Annual Medicine Drop Off this coming Saturday from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, which is the same day as Old Mills Day. And that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Of course, just reminders, Appearance Commission meets October 23rd, 6:30 in Town Hall. Veterans Affairs, October 25th at 7:00 at Town Hall. Old Mills Street Dance from 6:00 to 9:00 on Trade Street, and that's on Friday. October 27th, Old Mills Day is all day long, which will be up here at the Park. Parks and Rec Committee, October 29th at Town Hall. And that time for that one is...
6:30.
6:30.
6:30. And we have one opening, Jane? One opening on the Parks and Rec that needs to be advertised? Sorry.
Then Trunk or Treat, October 31st. They have extended the day to sign up to, to be a part of it, and I think that's this Friday. So if you want to participate, you have to actually fill out a registration form and go through Parks and Rec to do that. But Trunk or Treat will be Halloween from 6:00 to 8:00. Our regular meeting, November 5th at 7:00 PM. Staff comments? Do you have anything, Ms. Starling? Ms. Adams, Mr. Hartsock? I would like to thank Ms. Starling and Ms. Adams and those others of our staff that participated in our meeting on Friday and weathered the briars and the bushes and the insects and all the other things out there. But we appreciate you coming out and being a part of that special meeting that we held on Friday. Official comments? Are there any?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would like to also thank the staff, the first responders, department heads, and anyone else who had anything to do with the work that we did, that we were required to do during the storm. I'd also like to, to say that I want us to think hard before we do anything with golf course property. Like I said earlier, I just attended a tournament this weekend that had 90-some teams in it for Friday night, Saturday, and Sunday, that paid $100 a team to get in, and you couldn't find a hotel or motel room in Rocky Mount. I had to drive 14 miles over to some battle ridge or something like that to get a room to stay in for the weekend. So before we do anything with any of that land, I think we ought to go ahead with the study that was recommended with the Advisory Committee for, for Parks and Rec, before we do anything with that property. Do you realize how much, how many million dollars we're missing out on? I think the county projects theirs is between $6 and $8 million a year on hotel rooms, gas, restaurants, shopping, plus $100 a team a weekend. A hundred team is $10,000. Would that boost our economy in town, Drew? $10,000 a weekend? Yeah, I thought it wasn't. And all they do is put a guy out there to, to pick up paper. And all they do is put a guy out there to, to pick up paper. So, they do the fields on Friday and that's it. So, anyway, I appreciate everyone who came out tonight, I appreciate those who spoke, appreciate their opinions, I appreciate the opinions of this board. Thank you.
Are there others? Yes, sir.
I too appreciate everyone who came tonight. Appreciate all the speakers who took the time to stand up and have, and have their voices I'd like to say that I attended the Heroes Homecoming Meeting on Friday. While a lot of you guys were walking through the woods, we were talking about the calendar of events that's coming up, and they are now published. I'm going to leave a packet of them, I know, Mayor, you have them too, back there on the table. And on Mills Day, we'll have the Veterans Affairs Commission along with the VFW, we'll have several tables out here in the park, and we'll be handing these out to everybody that comes through. I'm going to have a box of them delivered to the campus where I work at, they'll be handed out as well. This is a huge event that's coming. And it was a long meeting, and it worked out very, very well, and the input was great. I also attended the State of the Community Conference, and I thought that was excellent as well. And I do mean first-class excellent. There was a lot of folks, and every table was full, the speakers were visionaries, and there was a common theme throughout the entire room, and that, and you could feel it. And it was Cumberland County proud and Cumberland County strong. And it was very, very well represented in there. I'll leave out, oh, and I got one other thing. On Thursday night, during our Veterans Affairs Commission meeting, we're going to be discussing as one of the topics, how to honor a veteran who just passed not too long ago by the name of Jim Clark. And we'll come back with some recommendations from the committee to the board about how to remember him and his community service, his lifelong community service at Hope Mills for over 50 years. And there'll be some tributes for that. And finally, last thing, is I appreciate the board listening to my recommendations about using the Parks and Rec Committee. That's why we have the committees. That's why volunteers volunteer to the committees. And we should use them. They're, they're made up of community residents, and if they, and tonight we approved some to join the Veterans Affairs Commission. So, thank you, board, for considering that option. That's all, Mayor.
Okay. Any way else?
Just to say, I appreciate all the public safety reports and other department heads. Of course, we got some elevated numbers because of the Hurricane Florence, increase in calls and that type of thing. And I guess, on some of the police reports, some of the numbers are behind, I guess, or not getting reported yet, Chief, because of software glitch or something?
The county is changing over to a new records council. It's, and I'll have a full accounting for it when I have my hearing contested, because it's going to change how the numbers are reported. So it's right in transition.
We appreciate it. Appreciate all you guys have done, during these terrific thousand-year storms. We also had a good meeting, walking the three parks that will be used in our future, and the golf course really looked to be in good shape. It could be used for applications right now that don't require a lot of investment. The other two parks would require a little bit of work here and there. But I look forward to having those discussions, to opening up at least one or two of them in the near future for our citizens. We'd have to, as I mentioned before, if we, if we open up the golf course, we might need to look at the possibility of leasing the parking lot from the current owner over there, or working out some kind of agreement, month to month or something, if you'd be open to that, or some type of agreement, or letter of understanding, what have you, if we can, if we can get some movement on that, if that's okay with you guys, as far as opening up some parking for the golf course.
Yeah, I think it's fine, because they've got fields over there right now that we could be playing soccer and football on, so, without doing anything to them, sit putting parking in.
Okay, that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
And Madam Ms.?
Yes.
During the walk we had Friday, I'm going to thank Deputy Lopez for giving me a lift back to my truck. I blew a soles off my boots, and it was flop, 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 and it got to be a little bit aggravating, so those boots have went on to meet their maker, and they've been replaced. Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Anything? Golf course was beautiful. I had no idea how beautiful it was, till you were actually out on there and walked the track, and I have to agree, it would be, I think people would really enjoy it. I did get the pleasure to get actually down into lake number two, to the, to the dam. Mr. Vick showed, had permission to take me over there, so that was very cool to see. It was amazing, amazing.
Anything else? I would just like to say that our Mayor's Leadership Youth Committee will be starting. I do have the nominees from each school. We will make sure we do a press release on this also, so the students will get that recognition. From Jack Britt High School, Cara Ramos, Ethan Finney, and Melissa Chu. From Grace Creek High School, Ashlyn Burgos, Emily Gonzalez, Kayla Matty. And from Southview High School, Nadia Carter, William Pryor, and Morgan Evans. And we'll start meeting with these young people prior to our meetings, but the first meeting will not be until December. Okay, do we have a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Make a motion to conduct a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3, to consult with the attorney on matters within attorney-client privilege, and to conduct the closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A6 to discuss personnel matters.
I have a motion. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed, we beg your patience. We'll be back as quickly as possible, and we'll be moving to the front conference room.
Jerry. Hold on, sorry. I'm going to call the session back in order. Let's make that motion, okay? Okay. A little lumpy.
We got a new cartoon.
Hmm?
We got a new cartoon.
You got it. You slide it down? Oh, okay.
Jerry's going to do that.
Okay, yeah, Jerry.
All right, I'm going to call the session back in order. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor Protem. I move to still the minutes of the closed session until such time as the release of the information. Would no longer frustrate the purpose of the closed session, that further no action was taken.
Okay. All in favor, raise your right hand. Tonight, we had our mayor walk out of a closed session. I think she said something like she just quit or resigned, I don't know, but if it's the will of the board, I'd like to instruct our town attorney to contact the town attorney, to contact our mayor, see what her intent is, whether she plans to resign, or if that was just a temporary thing she did. If that's okay with you guys.
I would like to add to that, if I could, that it's because of her son's involvement with the lone survivor. Every time somebody says something about her son, she gets a little bit out of shape. And I don't think what she says she really means, but she just said, "That's it, I'm leaving." And she didn't just leave the meeting, she left the building. So, with that, I just, if anybody else has anything to say?
Any more discussion? We just take a vote, instruct Dan to have that conversation with Mayor tomorrow morning, probably be appropriate, I'd imagine, if that's okay?
I make a motion, we asked Dan to do that.
I did.
Oh, you did? Oh, I'm sorry.
So, all in favor, raise your right hand?
Yeah.
And again? Okay, four to one. Now we have a motion, another motion?
So be it, I go home.
To recess. Thank you.